Welcome to the Bakersfield City Council Meeting. This television broadcast is brought to you by the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 PM City Council Meeting of August 15, 2018. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's good to see you here on a summer day, taking time to engage in the civic process. At this time Pastor James Laird, pastor of Bakersfield First Assembly, will offer the invocation. Pastor, we thank you for all that your church is doing. And following the invocation Rebecca Strasser, who is the distinguished young woman of Bakersfield, Class of 2019, will lead us in the pledge. Rebecca is a senior at GARCIS. She's a member of the National Honor Society, plans to attend UCLA, and hopes to become a -- I just say that kind of -- I went to the other school. And hopes to become a neuropsychologist, right? And she did a dance when she did the California competition, amazing contemporary dance. And thank you, we're so proud of you representing Bakersfield. And Pastor, thank you again, and you go ahead.
Thank you. It's my privilege. Let's pray.
Stand.
Dear Lord God, we thank you for our great city, our citizens, and our civic leaders. Though we are blessed to live in Bakersfield, we still face many challenges. Therefore, we ask for wisdom, for unity, and for your mercy. May the decisions made tonight honor you and help those in greatest need. You said in your word, "Blessed are the peacemakers, for they will be called sons and daughters of God." As a result, may we be your children that seek peace and pursue it. We humble ourselves under your mighty hand tonight, believing that you will lift us up in due time. Finally, we are so grateful for your unfailing and unconditional love. May your kingdom come, and may your will be done on earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Rebecca?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Brianna is going to get a picture of both of you before you leave. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We request that you turn off your phones, and in keeping with council policy, council members aren't allowed to send or receive electronic communications during the meeting. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but it isn't allowed during other times of the meeting. And for safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chambers. Thank you so much for your cooperation. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first item?
Under Presentations, Item A, we have a proclamation to Diane P. Martinez declaring Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Bakersfield during September 2018.
This is Isaac. Isaac and I were together at the opening of the Northwest baseball game. When Isaac was five years old, they found a brain tumor, and he's been battling cancer since that time. What an amazing young man. He has risen to try to help others, and he has collected over $30,000, I think now, for nonprofit organizations, continues to still fight the battle of cancer. And that's why we are here today, because of Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And so it is my honor to be able to issue this proclamation. The mayor of the City of Bakersfield, California, has officially proclaimed September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, in recognition of the over 15,000 children under the age of 19 diagnosed with cancer each year in America. In recognition of the fact that cancer knows no boundaries, afflicting all ethnic and socioeconomic groups. In recognition of the local children currently under treatment for this disease, and their families that support and encourage them. In recognition of the fact that childhood cancer is the second leading cause of deaths among our children, and in recognition of the need to support local medical centers and clinics so families may have the opportunity to receive local treatment for their children. So let's remember Isaac and all of those others, and this month, as September approaches, let's focus on that. And we have two amazing people, Diane and Priscilla, who advocate for children such as Isaac. And it's my honor to be able to present this proclamation to them.
Thank you, Mayor Go. And City Council, I'm going to let Priscilla first speak, and then I will follow up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm happy to be here today, because it's an opportunity for me to express my heart to you. I come to you today as a breast cancer survivor, and I have friends of those whose children that have been lost in the battle of cancer. Cancer is the leading cause of death among children, aside from accidents. According to the Coalition Against Childhood Cancer, on their 2017 webpage entitled Childhood Cancer Fact Library, which is at www.cact.org, that only 4% of federal government's cancer research dollars are allocated for childhood cancer research. They also state that the National Cancer Institute received $4.93 billion in 2015. For cancer research of that, only pediatric received approximately $198 million. According to our local organization, Second Start of the Right, who helps these warriors and families in Kern County and the surrounding area, 83 families have been impacted by childhood cancer. This organization supplies emotional and financial support in our community. They alone have served those 83 families, of which nine have gained their angel wings, 26 are in remission, 31 are under continued maintenance, or have learned they are a ned, no evidence of disease. Isaac would fall under that, under the maintenance. And 17 are still under treatment. Now based on the alarming numbers that I provided, why is this disease killer for children given so little attention? These children and families battle daily, even of those in remission, that have life-changing effects. We send a message to our children and future children to come, that their voices are muted to those who sit in a position to create change. We send a message that regardless of the epidemic growing, not only in this city that I love, but also in the United States, their lives don't make much of a difference. We communicate with our sons, daughters, grandchildren, nieces and nephews, godchildren, that they can have the world, yet we contradict that with the fact that they only deserve 4%. Kayla Blair was 21 months old when she was diagnosed with a rare cancer, and she gained her angel wings in January of 2009. And her family never got to experience her growth, and those monumental moments that parents love to experience, that a nine-year-old girl would have experienced. Ben Martinez was diagnosed at the age of 12, and he gained his angel wings April 14 of 2016. He and his family will never get to share that experience that he would have in high school and upcoming graduations. Each of these statistics have names and have families. We are here to be the voice of these muted children. We will raise awareness in our community for our families and for those families to come. I encourage you to be a part of this moment, and join us September 15 at our local Step Up for Kids Annual Childhood Cancer Awareness Event. This event will be available and held at Emerald Cove Park from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Be a part of raising and joining us, and saying #MoreThan4%. Thank you.
Thank you, Priscilla. I like her speaking first because she is a survivor of cancer, and it is because of the much awareness that was given to breast cancer over the years, that she is a survivor today, and that's why I'm here. My son is no longer here. I didn't get to see him start junior year of high school today. But there's other kids that are currently fighting cancer that I can still be a voice for, and I won't let Benjamin's death be in vain. So September, I'm asking each of you, whether you have children or not, you have nieces or nephews, you know kids in your neighborhood, and one of them. So seven children pass away every day from cancer, and 43 will be diagnosed with cancer every single day this year. That's a staggering number. I didn't realize that Benjamin would be one of those statistics, and unfortunately he is. But Bakersfield can make a change. And I'm very happy to say that not only are we celebrating on September 15, and yes, celebrate, because what I've always tried to do is cause it to be a positive awareness event, because children are our greatest treasure. It is fitting that gold is the color for childhood cancer awareness, because they are more precious than gold. And on September 15, not only are we having that awareness event for the Step Up for Kids, but I'm so happy to say that Dignity Health, all of their locations are going gold this year, and that's been a long fight, and I am so very thankful for them doing that, showing support, especially with the expansion of the Lawrence Small Emergency Room. I'm so very happy. And what I'd like to just end this speech with is something that Dr. Seuss wrote that I think is applicable to all of us. And Mayor Go, this is such an honor, I just cannot thank you enough. And City Council, again, thank you. Since 2016, you have given this proclamation to me on behalf of all of the families in Bakersfield. A person is a person, no matter how small. Unless someone likes you, cares a whole awful lot, nothing is going to get better. It's not. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and we do this in honor of Benjamin, in honor of Isaac, in honor of all of the other ones. So thank you for your advocacy. Let's take a photo.
Yes, absolutely.
Together. How about right over here?
Thank you. He knew everybody. This is great. Thank you. One, two.
Can I open it? Thank you.
Of course.
And take a picture?
Okay, sure. That way we can prove there's something really inside. It's not a folder. Okay, one more.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public Statements.
At this time, we'll receive public statements. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statements, please give those to the clerk, she'll give them to the council. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. Due to the public notice requirements of the Brown Act, the council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. If you're here to speak on Hearing Items 10A through C, now isn't the time. You'll be given an opportunity later when that item, when those items are called. Madam Clerk, Public Speaker?
We have received one speaker card this evening, and our speaker this evening is Tina Gerber regarding National Night Out.
Please introduce yourself.
Good evening. My name is Tina Gerber. I'm here representing Emmanuel Lutheran Church on Baker Street in East Bakersfield. A week ago, on August 7, we held a National Night Out Neighborhood Barbecue, or Neighborhood Block Party. A little bit of history about our church on Baker. About two years ago, financial issues and the loss of our pastor forced us into a redevelopment process within the Evangelical Lutheran Church of America. We gained the attention of our national ELCA in Chicago, which eventually led to financial support. We do have a longstanding history serving our community in East Bakersfield through the East Bakersfield Faith Community Alliance and Faith in Kern. Our redevelopment program has, among other things, focused our attention once again on our community and strengthened our attention. At our block party for National Night Out, we invited quite a few people to attend, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Councilmember Gonzalez for his attendance, for his encouragement to, for other people that he knew to attend. And not only did he attend, but he was there to talk to our neighbors, and he also gave a public, a rather public remark, recognized our commitment to be a stronghold on Baker Street. He also loaned us a canopy, because it was very hot and we needed a lot of shade. In addition to Councilmember Gonzalez, the Bakersfield Fire Station, Number 4 on Bernard Street, also was present with a fire truck, and three firefighters were able to join us and talk to our neighbors and our children about their role in safety. The California Highway Patrol sent two officers who interacted with our neighbors and actually played with the children in the games that we had set up. Thrivant Financial was present. They issued 25 child ID cards. The Baker Street Library was also present, and they signed up 20 new patrons. Glenn Clausen, one of the owners of Stairway to Beauty across the street from our church, contributed tables and chairs. All in all, this was a volunteer effort. From a church with an average attendance of 35 to 40 people per Sunday, 23 of our members volunteered to help and provide 150 hot dogs, as well as 28 dozen cookies. I want to, again, thank Councilmember Gonzalez, and I would like to encourage participation in this truly neighborhood event next year, making it an event for the neighborhoods of Bakersfield. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerber. It's always a joy to watch your church in action, reaching out in that community. It's been my pleasure to be involved in a number of your neighborhood outreaches, and for a small congregation, you're doing a lot in there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Calendar Items 8A through 8AY for Approval. A staff memorandum has been received regarding Item 8C, Transmitting Clerical Changes to the Landscape Ordinance to Improve Clarity. Also, a staff memorandum has been received regarding Item 8AF, Correcting the Agreement Number Listed in the Administrative Report to State Agreement Number 17-171, not Agreement 17-170.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I will make the motion on the consent items, but first I have a conflict on the Item N, so my vote will not count on that item. I have a financial interest in that property. And Councilmember Weir has requested that Items T, AG, and AN be removed from the consent calendar. So my motion is to approve Consent Calendars A through AY, accepting Items T, AG, and AN, with staff corrections on those items.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir?
Councilmember Weir did not want to make any comments. He just wanted to vote separately, so I, if possible, I will make one motion for all the remaining three items. No, separate? Okay. So first, Item T, I will make a motion to approve.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. Item AG?
I would now make a motion on Item AG for approval.
Motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir voting no.
Thank you. Item AM?
I would now make a motion for Item AN for approval.
Motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir abstaining.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Under Public Hearing, we have a public hearing to consider a resolution ordering the summary vacation of a 10-foot-wide public utility easement located at the northwest corner of Alcorn Creek Lane and White Rapids Way.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing. Before I open the public hearings, I'll go over the presentation time policy. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers, so it's important that you identify yourself and make your statements quickly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to the staff recommendation, then we'll hear from those who'd like to speak in favor of the staff recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the wall behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement at that point. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be answered until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Unless there's an approval by the majority of the city council, there's a strict 15-minute time limit for all those in favor or in opposition to staff's recommendation. So please be concise, avoid repeating the remarks of previous speakers. Madam Clerk, you've already read the first public hearing item, and so at this time, I will call on Mr. Fidler to introduce it.
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the owner of a single-family residence located at 12,200 White Rapids Way desires to construct a new swimming pool, which is located in a current public utility easement. It is typical for a developer to dedicate the public utility easement for facilities such as power, water, phones, and etc. It appears that there are no utilities within this public utility easement, so this vacation meets the criteria of a summary vacation as set forth in the Streets and Highways Code. So staff recommendation is to approve the resolution for the summary vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, how many people would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor?
I move to approve of Item 10A.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion was unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the next public hearing item.
Public Hearing to Consider a Resolution Adopting Fees Pursuant to the Cost Recovery System, Including Certain Park Facility Rentals, Fire Hydrant Distribution and Installation Inspections, and the Blue Star Military Banner Program.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Member City Council Nelson Smith, Finance Director. The city provides a master fee schedule, and it's reviewed in its entirety at least every two years. It was last done in June 2017. There was a cleanup item that came to council in January of this year. These are some additional cleanup items that need to be addressed. There's one correction and two additional fees being proposed by staff. The first item is the park facility rental fee, where staff is proposing to add fees for rental of either single areas or the entire park, for both the Mesa Marin and the Sports Village, similar to those at Park at Riverwalk. The second item is a cleanup item. In the last fee adoption, the fire hydrant distribution fee was, there was a clerical error made, where the wrong number was placed in the new fee amount instead of $710. It should have been $1,200. The $710 was the actual increase from 490 to 1,200. So we're asking to correct the amount to the $1,200 amount, which is the cost of providing the service. And the third item is adding a Blue Star Military Banner Program fee of $189 to hang hometown hero-style banners in certain locations designated in the policy. So staff is recommending adoption of the resolution following the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many people would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, how many people would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, at this time, we will then close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor?
I will move to approve Item 10B.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next public hearing item, please.
Public Hearing on Resolution of Necessity to Determine the Public Interest and Necessity for Acquisition of Certain Real Property by Eminent Domain for the Centennial Corridor Project at 22645 Stockdale Highway.
Thank you. Mr. Fidler?
Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, as part of the Thomas Roads Improvement Program Centennial Corridor Project, which will connect State Route 58 from 99 to I-5 through the West Side Parkway and Stockdale Highway, the project will construct a new roundabout at Enos Lane and Stockdale Highway. As part of that project, we required additional right-of-way to develop the new roundabout. This project, this resolution of necessity is to acquire the additional right-of-way necessary from one of the corners to develop the, one of the legs of the roundabout. The resolution is for approximately 1.46 acres of fee partial acquisition, which is unencumbered, and then a partial fee acquisition of approximately 0.95 acres of encumbered, and then a temporary construction easement totaling up 1,282 square feet. The staff recommends approval of the resolution of necessity, and just to make you aware, staff has been working with the property owner and has come to agreements, and they've entered into a right of entry with the staff. We're still negotiating in hopes that we won't need to fall The resolution is for approximately 1.46 acres of fee partial acquisition, which is unencumbered, and then a partial fee acquisition of approximately 0.95 acres of encumbered, and then a temporary construction easement totaling 1,282 square feet. The staff recommends approval of the resolution of necessity. And just to make you aware, staff has been working with the property owner and has come to agreements, and they've entered into a right of entry with the staff. We're still negotiating in hopes that we won't need to follow through on this process.
Thank you, Mr. Fidler. At this time, I'll open the public hearing. How many would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Seeing none, how many would like to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Councilmember Freeman.
Mr. Fidler, just one question. When this roundabout is constructed, since it's the gateway most frequently used to come into the city from the west, is there any chance that we will make a special effort to landscape or monument, or is something in this roundabout that... We've talked about upgrading the gateways into the city. This is probably the easiest one we'll ever have versus getting off at May or White Lane. If some thought can be given, I don't know where the money comes from, but I'd just like to raise the issue. This is the western entrance to the city. The people come in, and if there's some way to make this roundabout more attractive, that'd be great for the city.
Councilmember Freeman, we can definitely work with Caltrans to develop maybe some landscaping plans. I'm not sure if they'll allow a monument within the rideaway or within the roundabout since it is a state route facility, but we can definitely ask. But we do intend to have some sort of decorative treatments within the roundabout itself.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Move to approve item 10C.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Weir voting no.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Council and mayor's statements.
Councilmember Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask that staff prepare a resolution of support for the Water Supply and Water Quality Act of 2018 for the council's consideration. That's, I think, an item that stands to specifically benefit the Central Valley quite a bit when it comes to our water supply, water deliveries, and water storage. And I think it's something that this body should opine on. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank Bakersfield Police Department Chief Martin, his personnel, and everyone that was at the National Night Out at the Rabble Bank. And whoever thought about bringing it inside needs to be commended. If it was you, chief, it was a great idea. And if it wasn't, they need to be promoted because it was a nice being air-conditioned. The last item is Louis Gill. I know he's been making the rounds with council members, maybe some staff too, regarding what he purports is an emergency situation with some funding issues that they're having with the Homeless Collaborative. Anyway, I'd like him to, instead of individually maybe talking to us, get in front of the council and discuss what's going on so we can have an open discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Weir.
Thank you, Mayor. As we all know, this is an election year, and there are a couple of local majors that are on the upcoming ballot that are of some importance to the city. Since these are the first ballot majors in the city in several years, and there are some new faces on the council and city staff, I think it's important that we get an update on the rules and roles of the council and staff when it comes to discussing these measures in public or with the media. So, I'd like to ask the city attorney to give a brief presentation at the next council meeting explaining the applicable legal standards relating to advocating for or against these measures. Additionally, I would request that this item be agendized for potential action. Also, at the Personnel Committee meeting yesterday, a request was made of the consultant to prepare a presentation and/or documents demonstrating the change to our retiree, health care, and funded liability and other factors by restating our subsidy. The consultant agreed, and it seemed the calculations would be forthcoming. I would like to ask staff to please contact our consultant and set a committee meeting date, preferably before our next council meeting, and preferably in September, if we can't do it before the next council meeting, before the last council meeting in September. Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to mention that my granddaughter took her three children to the Night Out, and they loved it. Now, my five-year-old great-grandson wants to be a police officer, and he wants to take care of the dog. He wants to be one that works with the police dog and wants to take care of the dog. But they were impressed. They... Was it also, was it also the fire department?
Yes, Bakersfield Fire Department had a presence there too, and they did a wonderful job, along with other community members.
Yes, it was wonderful. And they commented how nice it was to have it inside. But, gosh, just great for families. And the children climbed on the fire truck, and it was really very nice. So, impressed the kids, and they were very proud of our officers. So, thank you, chief.
Thank you. Anyone else? We had the pleasure of having 24 students from Wakayama here this last week with a couple of their leaders. And thanks to all in the community who helped make this cultural exchange possible. It's so wonderful when we have our sister cities and we're able to share culture. The young people did some calligraphy for us on one of the nights, and they sang in English very impressively. So, it's always a joy for all of you who are very supportive of the Sister City Project. And then, just with 9/11 coming up, I know Chief Galagasa has organized our annual memorial tribute. You'll be getting more information about that, but I just want to encourage all of us to support that and just never forget. So, unless there are other comments here tonight, we stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here at 5:53. Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 4:00 PM City Council Special Meeting of August 15, 2018. Madam Clerk, please call to roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Rivera. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Here.
Councilmember Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. To comply with the Brown Act, we'll receive public statements now. Please limit your comments to the closed session and League of California Cities' resolution items only at this time. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per subject. Are there any public statements? Seeing none, we'll move on. For the efficiency of our meeting, I suggest that we address the New Business Item 5 before closed session Item 3. Is there a motion to do?
I would so move.
Madam Clerk, would you please read New Business Item 5? Oh, we have to, we actually have to vote, don't we? So, you have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, would you please read New Business Item 5?
Under New Business, Item 5, League of California Cities' Annual Conference Appointment of Voting Delegates and City Position on Conference Resolutions.
Thank you. Mr. Telia.
Thank you, Mayor Go. Mayor Go, members of the council. It's that time of year again where we prepare for the annual League of California Cities Conference. This year, it's being held in Long Beach, California between September 12 and September 14. As is typical, the league requires us to select a voting delegate and up to two alternate delegates to serve on behalf of the city at the annual business meeting, which is scheduled for 12:30 PM on Friday. We have a large group that's attending this year from the city, so I believe we have six of the council members, including the mayor as well. So, you can go ahead and discuss amongst yourselves who might be willing to serve as the voting delegate and the alternate. Just to note that you will have to be present for the Friday business meeting, so you may want to take that into consideration. And then, in addition to that, there are two resolutions this year that are being put forth for consideration. We provided a brief summary and a staff recommendation on each of those. Neither one is very controversial. So, if you'd like us to go into more detail, we can. But if not, I'll defer to the council and your direction.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I would move Mayor Go as a voting delegate and Councilmember Parlier as the alternate delegate.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Do you need a motion on the position?
If you want to include that, you can in your motion, approval of staff recommendation, or you could do it separate, however you prefer.
I've already done it, so I'll do again. So, I would move staff's recommendation on the league's position on resolutions.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Under closed session, conference with legal counsel existing litigation regarding City of Bakersfield versus JDS Hospitality Group LLC et al.
Move to adjourn to closed session.
Well, adjourn to closed session.